Call this meeting of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Veeder.
Leyland?
Here.
Little? Can you unmute?
I didn't say hello, but...
I think I heard him.
I heard him.
Tralka?
Here.
White?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Please join us in a moment of silence to reflect on today's actions. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda as received or amended?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All is opposed? The agenda is approved. Next is public comments. I don't see anybody in the room today. This is for something that's not on the agenda item. Is there anybody online for public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to claims and payments.
Mr. Chair, I have those today. The total for the week is $577,761.05. Some of the notable departments are secondary roads with $111,972. Conservation with $187,044. A large part of that is construction on the Wolf Creek Bridge. And then the sheriff at $50,000 and a few others with lesser amounts.
Very good. A motion?
So moved.
Second.
So it moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Veeder.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little? Tralka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Resolution is approved. Next, you're received project updates from department heads or elected officials.
Morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Niklitz, county engineer. We started work on our subdrain project last... yesterday, and I wanted to keep you updated on that. I believe I can probably... is it working?
Yeah, I guess it doesn't really show for time, but I'll show for the rest of it.
Okay, then I'll show you a few pictures and then I can always... you're saying Tom won't be able to see it?
Tom will, but...
I can see it.
We won't. Okay, so if you can't see it, I could just defer until next week.
I can see it.
Is there only one?
Yeah, only you, though. Only you, though, Tom.
I think I'll just defer with the photos until next week.
Okay.
But I just wanted you to know that this work is going on and this is that work that we talked about earlier in the budget during budget time to improve a few miles of our gravel road system. And if you're interested in seeing the work that's going on today, the second part of it's going on today on Hammond Avenue, and this would be north of Shrock. It's about a half of a mile. Probably take most of the day, but I will show you some photos of that next week, and then that's all for my updates. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any department heads online that wish to give us an update today?
Tristan, very quick county conservation. Very quickly, the cleanup in Blackhawk Park is going quite well.
Who is it?
Yeah, it's going well at Blackhawk Park.
Today, and hopefully they will have their work done by Friday. That's our goal, anyway, and we may be able to open that park back up by the weekend, so... Any questions?
Mike, we really didn't hear what you said at the beginning. We just now turned the volume up. Could you repeat that quickly? Thank you.
Yep, it was short and sweet. The cleanup in Blackhawk Park is going very well. Pedicore is moving in today to start grinding and taking care of those piles of debris. And we, with any luck at all, our goal is to be finished up by Friday so that we can possibly open that park by the weekend. We've removed most of the hazards, or all of the hazards that are above head. And right now, they're taking down trees that are gonna die, and they've got a few more that they need to take down. Otherwise, it's going quite well.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other department heads online? All right, hearing none, we will move on to the minutes approved from the July 14th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All is opposed, the minutes are approved. Next is the consent agenda. This will be approved with a single resolution.
So moved.
Second.
So it moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Veeder.
Little?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. Next is under contracts and agreements. This is a resolution that the service agreement between Blackhawk County and ISAC to become a participant in the ISAC HIPP program between July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021 with an annual fee of $1,750. To be approved and direct chair design for the same as recommended by Ken Veeder, Information Technology Director.
So moved.
Second.
So it moved and seconded. You have any questions or discussion?
Ken, did you want to comment what this does for us as a county?
Yeah, HIPAA is very important, and this is one way we can get training for our staff. They have webinars for the people that are on the HIPAA committee. They provided support for us to come up with our HIPAA policy. We have time that we can ask them questions about HIPAA-related issues. We've had this for the last couple of years, and I feel it's very beneficial. It's an important thing that we need to keep our eyes focused on.
So we usually take advantage of all that training and what is available?
Normally, they have a conference in April, and of course, that didn't happen.
Sure.
But yes, there's information online, and then, like I said, webinars that we can do, so...
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Veeder.
Tralka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. The resolution is approved. Next, under other business, this is a resolution that the amendment to the minutes of the Board of Supervisors meeting from November 15th, 2018, to read federal and state candidates receiving the most votes in Blackhawk County President and Vice President for President and Vice President, it was Hillary Clinton and Tim Kaine.
Do you want to comment on that at all, Grant?
Sure. I was looking for something else in the minutes, and I ran across that entry, and it had the wrong names there. It said the candidates getting the most votes for President and Vice President were Donald J. Trump and Mike Pence. And that is in error, and so I am asking that that be amended.
Okay. Motion to approve?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Veeder.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Resolution carries. Next is a resolution to approve the Iowa community's insurance pool settlement of $22,096.22 in the matter of a claim management investigation, Corp. versus Blackhawk County. Claim involves automobile collision between claimant and Blackhawk County engineer vehicle.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Kathy?
I really didn't have much to comment on. Dana is the one who works with ICAP and the insurance company, but I can answer any questions if you have this. Was our vehicle that collided with a semi tractor trailer, and this is to pay damages to that other vehicle that we hit?
And we've had quite a bit of correspondence over the course of months here, I guess, too.
Yes, since the accident happened.
Thank you.
All right, I believe it's been moved and seconded.
Yes.
Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Veeder.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Resolution is approved. Next is discussion, possible board action, county and community support for Cedar Valley Hospitality Warming and Resource Center.
Well, we had quite a bit of discussion on it last week, but I thought there were still probably a lot of things that weren't unanswered from what our discussion was. I didn't know if this is on for an update for today of... You know, I think when we ended, and even in the minutes, it reflected, you know, some of the commitments of others that some of us had asked or were interested in. I know the timeline is short, so I guess I'd...
I'd say the big thing, I don't know if there's who's online for the center. I know that, I think that your initial meeting happened with Waterloo for the Community Block Development Grants. I don't know if they have an update on that or know when they would be hearing that decision.
Is there anybody online that would like to provide comment?
It looks like Nicholas Grossman was on, and then it looks like Karen Colleen Shipper's phone number.
For calling in.
Yeah.
Well, as I've stated in the past, this has... I've always had a soft spot in my heart for the homeless. I don't want to give them handouts. I want to give them handups. And this is so much more than simply a warming center. It's a resource center so that we can help and guide individuals in getting on a path to where we are. We have homes that we can live in. I didn't realize how beneficial this would be for the Waterloo police officers and probably the other officers in the county until I started hearing from Waterloo officers how it was so nice to have this facility where they could take these individuals who had been discharged from the hospital and had no place to go. Or they come across somebody who had a few drinks, and once they've had a few drinks, they realize that they'd like to be in a warm place, and the officers were able to easily give them a ride to the facility, drop them off, make sure they were safe, make sure they were secure, and be in and out in 15 minutes. And then the officers would walk through the facility on a regular basis. COVID actually created some circumstances for us with funding. You know, one obligation we have is, yes, we need to be efficient, but we also need to be adaptable as elected officials. And the circumstances that were created were the, basically, or approximately, $105,000 that Colleen Shipper was able to put into the reserve funds due to a lesser need for those funds over the previous six months. We budgeted for her to utilize those funds because of the circumstances of COVID. They weren't needed or realized. So it created some interesting circumstances for us. If not for those circumstances and those funding, I would be hard-pressed to support the motion I'm going to make to take $100,000 out of reserves and put it toward the purchase of the Warming Center Resource Center that's being sought by the Hospitality House.
So your desire to do that is without any participation from anyone, just no assurances from the cities?
No assurances from the cities, but I challenge Waterloo to step up and also put forth some funds. However, that's not attached to my motion.
You know, Dan, Dan, I got a question.
Yes, yes, sir.
I think we all have a soft heart, soft heart when it comes to things like this. The county, over the years, if you look at the hundreds of thousands of dollars that we budgeted every year for all the agencies, community services, Operation Threshold, EMA, Jesse Cosby, and so forth, and so forth. The county does their part. A message you're trying to send to the departments is if you do a good job in their budget yearly, and you got leftover money, and that money's out there forever to spend as extra money. And as a taxpayer, I kind of take difference with that when you call my tax dollars "extra money in the reserves." The money was budgeted. It wasn't used. That's happened every year. The sheriff's department has given money that they haven't done for various circumstances back to the general fund, but we don't sit there and say we're gonna spend it on something else. You can't throw money at problems. You indicated it was a good place for your officers, which you're at Waterloo, but yeah, you never took it to your mayor or city council to do anything about it. And here, we're sitting here. The county really hasn't realized anything yet on this COVID as far as the revenues that we're gonna be losing. We probably won't know anything until it's all over with, and who knows when that's gonna be, so... I think we always have to be cautious when we spend money outside the budget. And that money ended the 30th of June, and it doesn't exist anymore. It's not extra money. It's not anything. It's taxpayers' money. And I see no plan here whatsoever, other than the county throwing in $100,000. I don't know if we can come back, want more next week, next month. I think it's an excellent program. You got some good people working on it, but it was thrown at the county fairly quick, too, as Lyndy indicated earlier, so I'm not gonna support this today. I think we need a buy-in from the city of Waterloo, not just resources. We need hard money from them. And as far as I'm concerned, as a county supervisor, I represent all of Blackhawk County. The Laports, the Hudson's, the Dunkertons, the Pinchforts areas and all of those, not just the city of Waterloo. So I'm not gonna support this today because I don't... I don't... It's not the right place for the board to be talking about it, anyway. We were very fortunate to have a large reserve, and it's kind of haunting us every week because it seems like every week, somebody comes up with something, they call it "extra money," and wants to spend it. And you may see a little bit of decrease in revenue when we get done with this COVID stuff, so... Anyway, that's my point.
Oh, Craig, do you want to comment, or do you want to...
Go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, there are several things that concern me about this, and part of it is buy-in from the rest of the community, I guess. And knowing that we have strong reserves, I know people look to us quite frequently. They didn't used to. That's taken us years to get to that position, but this is something needed in the community. I'm not sure to what level and to how we address it all, but I... The part of this that's concerned me is also that we set up a protocol or a procedure in place for people that had needs, other agencies and groups, and they were very definitely important needs in our community. There are many that we're not addressing. I think we thought when we set this up, there were limited on dollars that we can spend, but we would like to make it more fair and equitable to people, so we put that procedure in place. We have not asked any of those questions that we typically ask from everybody else to respond to us for consideration. So I, you know, last week, we heard that there was support for it. I think any project we ever do, there is support for it because there is a need. So, you know, those people are to be commended for working with them in the job they do and seeing that need, but we also recognize that need. I... My concern also is a little bit about who is... what is being done, I guess, and to what level to get this funded. And obviously, the county becomes a good place to look right now because we are strong. But last... A couple of weeks ago, Chris had mentioned that you and Chris were well aware of the project, and it was something you'd been working on and had knowledge of. And hopefully, that the information that you were both aware of would be shared with us, and so that we'd be as updated on the project. And, you know, I'm thinking of just certain things, even the request was a little vague on who was asking, but I think from my homework, it's Cedar Valley Hospitality House, on behalf even of the Warming Center. So things like, you know, the board members and what brought us to the request and the offer and that type of thing, and how that worked. Maybe that's getting too in the weeds on it, but I just thought some of those questions were not answered. It was more to what the need is, who utilizes it, and that type of thing. I... What I wanted to be cautious of also, that because there were two supervisors working on this project, that we don't change rules or change what we do because of our passions or our projects or things that we take very seriously in the community, but we want to be above reproach, that it isn't because some of us have a project we like, so we end the rules a little bit and do things differently than we do for anyone else. So that was one of the issues, another issue, I should say. Just a question I had, I guess, is why this current Hospitality House, and you probably both can answer this, why that couldn't be utilized till as the Warming Center or to some degree? I know there were some populations there from a six to 12 people nightly, so that was showing a need, definitely. But like I say, was that the reason, then, for the purchase of this facility or why they couldn't continue in their current facility? But like I say, those are just questions like we could ask, but I... And another, I guess, something that's concerned me a little bit is, we look at this, and Tom touched upon it, COVID and its impact on us as a county and how that's affected our revenues and what that means to us going forward. And we've always been asking our staff to reconsider projects or push back projects or delay projects, things that our county is obligated to do. And so their projects are being delayed for the benefit of Blackhawk County residents, and yet we're willing to take a step out and say, "We want to take money from our reserves for this project." So that concerns me a little bit, that we maybe need a discussion on what projects we're going to be pulling back from the county and then stepping out with other projects, because we all know there's gonna be a lot of needs in this community, I think, just based on what we've seen from COVID and people out of jobs and just how important that's gonna be. So I think Tom touched on a little bit, too. What's the plan to get us there? Not just, "Let's throw money at it and hope that somebody else can come up with the rest," or that that's the starting fund for it. Let's hear what those people that are working on it are doing, and how many contacts have been made, and what's that response? And because I think it puts everybody, like government entities, in a, you know, a position of, "Our budgets were set." So obviously, this is outside the budget, but who will respond then as a Waterloo and Cedar Falls, Evansdale, I guess, or anybody? We have a big need in our county. Our representation is for the unincorporated areas. They probably would be the last ones that would be utilizing it. It would primarily be our... the greater community here, so... I guess there's just many things about it that concern me. The eviction crisis that I see is coming up. When we make some... But Colleen has a budget now. We may have to go over that. We know there are some years we've had to do that before. Do we say, "Okay, we gave $50,000 or $100,000 or whatever to this project now, but oh, now the county's gotta come up with funding to help those people still in '21?" So... And that's why I just was hoping it was an update with a lot of information to provide today and change my thoughts on it, because I'd love to see those questions answered, but those are just some of the things that are concerning to me. We are stewards of the county taxpayers' money, and so I want to do everything that we can to make sure we're above reproach in the projects we do and how we do them. And I know this is a need. It's not to say that, so...
The facility that was being utilized for the Warming Center is no longer going to be available. It was the old Hawkeye Center on the east side.
Oh, yeah.
West.
I knew that was...
On the west side, correct. And the building that they currently utilize on the east side isn't conducive to housing individuals. It's an old house that's currently a duplex with basically offices and community space on the first floor and apartment on the second floor. And what I find so interesting is, in my interactions with the homeless, they're typically people with mental health differences, exasperated by substance abuse issues. And these are challenges we're facing across the country, across the state, and here in our own county. Any municipality, any area in the city can utilize this Warming Center, of course. And like I said, it is... And we all have... I know we all have a soft spot in our heart for this, but sometimes I just like to move discussions along, take a stand, and make a point and see where we all stand, and let's air it out. And we've had great discussion thus far, and I, you know, I want to see us proceed. Government moves slowly. There's five of us that have to make a collective decision here. And I wanted to just move us along because I've been critical of the state in their handling of mental health issues. I truly believe they drag their feet, and nothing is getting accomplished, and I blame both sides of the aisle.
Would you like us to vote on that, because I think that would be unanimous?
Yes, or if anybody would suggest a modification on the amount?
No, I'm...
Talking to James, I was aware of how much...
No, I didn't mean on this. I meant on the vote.
Oh, okay.
Not doing anything that would affect your mental health, yeah.
I just want to see solutions. I'm a solution seeker. I believe in tackling problems head-on, so I put it out there.
I think this is a possible solution. I'd just like to see it not just be the county-only solution.
No, I can't see the county being responsible for this standalone deal itself because, like Tom said, and Linda said, too, that there's gonna be things next year that we're gonna have problems paying for. And we're putting $100,000 out of taxpayers' money out there for a good cause, but we don't know what the costs are gonna be for everything that we have to get done next year, too.
I do think, just to comment really quickly on the current location, the cost of putting a sprinkler system into the house would be more than the value of the house itself because it's, yeah, probably even significantly more. And so it just didn't make financial sense to invest that kind of money with that system in that current facility. I do see this not as extra money, but as a wise investment to fill a need. We know that we need more alternatives for people to divert them from going to jail. Not every... Not everything that somebody interacts with a law enforcement official with needs to result in somebody ending up in jail, but there's not enough alternatives to go in the community. There's more every year, and we're improving on that, and I see this as being a part of that puzzle that we need to complete. And so I... And I do think, though, a lot of jurisdiction over certain policies is just over the unincorporated. We represent, you know, the public health needs of... and the many social service needs of the entire county. And so I really do see this as an asset for the entire county, as well as just a smart investment that in the long run, we know that as we track... And you know this very well, anyone sitting with the Stepping Up Committee, that as you track an individual through the system and how much they cost, especially once they get tied up in the criminal justice system, that if we have these steps of points of intervention where people can access service, and this is in a very low barrier way, that when we get them on that path, they ultimately save the taxpayer money. I mean, the payoff doesn't come in one year or two years, but you track it and you see how these high users of the criminal justice system end up costing a lot of money, and this is just one of those entry points where you can break that cycle. And... But if there's... And I definitely support... I'll second Supervisor Tralka's motion. It doesn't sound like we have the votes today, but if there is... If you feel more comfortable maybe having them fill out the same application that people fill out, that other nonprofits fill out during the budget session, or if there is a list of questions that we can write up, it's hard to remember everything that gets mentioned in the meeting.
Certainly, yes.
That we can work to make sure that they're answered, so that you... So that everybody feels comfortable.
I guess I am curious of when the decision was made to put an offer in on the house where the funding... They thought the funding was gonna come because it was gonna have to come in such a short period of time. So to me, that demands a plan of some sort, who you're gonna contact, when you're gonna do it, and get it in place, and get the yeses, nos, or heck, we're out of luck.
I'd like to see us take this to the Health Department, have a buy-in from the Health Department, and also from CSS. As long as we're talking monies, you know, the Health Department always has excess of money at the end of the year, and this would be something good for them to get involved with. I've been doing some homework on looking at a plan where we just give them a certain amount of money every year, and they do what they want with it, like some of these other counties do, and it works a lot better. There's too many duplications of services that are in our community that other services could be rendered out, you know, if we watched our nickels and dimes close enough.
When facilities like this are delicate upon location, based upon location, because a lot of people have the attitude, "Not in my backyard."
Yeah, yes.
So we're limited on where they can be, and this opportunity cropped up. Ideal location, it's near downtown, near the House of Hope, not far from the current Hospitality House location. Came together quickly, and then it... The sprinkler system takes time to put in. It's amazing how busy the sprinkler companies are now and construction companies to get these things accomplished. The cold weather will be on us before we know it. It'll be November, December, and we could be without a building. So it came together. It did come together quickly. They decided to purchase it and started fundraising procedures to raise money. The owner of the building is going to do a... The owner of the building is going to do an in-kind donation to help it along.
That's great.
The price wasn't bad. Like I said, I put it out there so we could have some good discussion, which we had.
Well, I'd like discussion, there's not been discussion of the plan.
Well, I like how respectful the dialogue was. You don't see that in some municipalities.
How about also looking at AFIL, you know, American for Independent Living, they should be involved in this, too. You know, given some monies.
And some of the things, like I say, right after we last week's meeting, I said, it was interesting, I said, one, one question did come to me that was regarding the, if you had a dollar figure for the cost that it is saving the Waterloo Police Department, something like Tom had asked, but they said if he has that figure, we'd sure like it, and I think it was to make arguments for what is the savings to us as taxpayers. But two projects, were good projects that are in our community that also looking to the county then for potential funding. And so, not that they're not very worthwhile and projects that we need in this community because, as Chris said, yes, we've all been working on some of these areas for a long time. No, that is needed, it's not that at all, and that it's a good project, and I'm not saying that this isn't the greatest place for it and, you know, the best place in the community, and if we can get this to happen. Just somewhat, like I said last week, we needed a different strategy than just the county. And I guess that's what I was hoping today, we would hear something has changed and, you know, what the amounts would be or who's... So those are some of the things, I guess, I...
Yeah, because there's going to be a long-term need down the road, too. It's not going to go away next year. So it's constantly going to be needing revenue coming in, in order to survive.
Well, and the hospitality house has been able to do that, to keep their operations going. And we do, the application is into the city of Waterloo for the Community Block Development Grants, we just don't have an answer on...
Sure.
As for $75,000.
Okay, and the decision to make that is when? When do they make that decision?
I, not the one that wrote, I don't know.
Oh, okay, all right, I just meant approximate, so would we know in time to do some of that?
We have a motion, okay?
We do, I think we do in a second.
Can we call for the question?
I hate to say no against the project because it almost sounds like then we're turning it away or we're not.
No, we just want...
Just not for the $100,000.
I think Dan and Chris both know that we, the ones that are going to vote no, just need more information, so they feel good about it. That's my thoughts.
That's fair. Do we want to resend the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, the motion is rescinded. And I'll just say, just because it is hard to remember every question that's answered, especially if you can type them off and email to us.
Yeah, I mean, some of those, I just, when I saw it was on the agenda, I better make some good notes, so thank you. Who sits on that board? Do we know?
The, we are both on the advisory committee of the Warming Center portion of it, but we're not on the Board of Directors of the Hospitality House.
Can you get that for us?
Of course, yes, absolutely. And they're the 501(c)(3).
Yeah, I knew you mentioned that, so I thought some of those things, because even, yeah, even that, when we do our regular questionnaire, we make people divide that. So, but yeah, I'll start, put my questions.
Again, thanks. It was a good discussion, too.
It was good, very good.
All right, we will move on to item D under Other Businesses, this is discussion, possible board action, discuss county preparedness for COVID-19. One thing, one thing that is troubling, and we've all struggled with issues of local control, as long as any of us have served on this board, and I think our colleagues in local governments and the school boards are really in a big struggle right now. School boards all across the state had been working hard to develop their plans, and then the governor came in and pretty much threw it all out, all out the door, without a lot of strong guidance and certainly no financial support to implement anything. And so I don't know if we want to, we don't, I don't have a draft of a statement or something, but I just really want to raise this alarm that it's, I think that those decisions lacking, because we know that there's not going to be big, strong financial support or infrastructure coming from the state, that they really shouldn't be mandating what each of these individual school districts are going to do when they've been working for months to prepare for the fall semester.
Yeah, wish them luck.
So, yeah, so I know it's, I just encourage you to support the efforts that are being done. I know there's, I think, a number of teachers and parents that are organizing some big drive-by events on Terrace Hill. I don't know the dates of those yet, I'm not sure they have them published, but they're certainly looking for any voices to speak out on their behalf right now because it's, I think it's a really kind of troublesome situation that, as we see, there's a lot of difference between from county to county on what the level of infections are, and that's why I think that these decisions are best left up to these local school boards.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, as a parent with children who go to the public schools, I just want choices, and that's what we're being offered here in our community is choices, and I appreciate that. We have three kids we are going to send back to school. We have a couple others who are going to homeschool. I'm susceptible. I have one kidney. I was asked the question yesterday, well, what if you get it? Then I deal with it.
Yeah, I think it's really unfortunate, it's that we're, all of this ultimately stems from, I think, a failure at the federal government, whereas all the resources are in this country, that the big push to mandate that the schools are open publicly by the governor is an economic choice. I mean, the federal government could be doing things to continue unemployment benefits at the extended level, which have expired and, which is what's going to be causing this eviction crisis that we're going to be facing, because there's a number of people, you know, out of work and now have lost this unemployment or weren't eligible in the first place. And, you know, it's just, it's just really sad, I don't know what else to say about it.
Well, in our CSS meeting last month, we found out that a bill was passed late in the legislature session that affects our 19 counties. The state wants to cut us in half, and they want DHS to run the show. And as far as I'm concerned, DHS can't even handle what they got now, so I don't know how they think they're going to be able to handle what we've got going, which is good for the state, good for our 19 counties, good for the people being served, and that they want to mess with it. You know, it seems that's all they get done down there anymore, it's a shame.
County, isn't it?
And if we do, yeah, and if we do split, I tried to bring this to some, there's three other counties that are in favor of split, and I don't know why, I don't really care, but they're going to suffer the, their people's going to suffer the consequences because services are going to be cut back because they're not going to have as much money, because Black Hawk's either going to be in one part of it or any other part of it, you know, and Black Hawk's the biggest, big dog on the street that'll be giving the most money and probably having the most services rendered to their people. But I want to see everybody that needs services get their services like we're doing now. And it was brought up at the meeting that some people have to drive 120 miles. Well, Karen quickly corrected the person and said, no, that's not DHS person, and said, no, that's not true. You could go to a local doctor in your hometown, and the doctor sends the bill to CSS, and we pay the bill, simple as that.
There was a time when a lot of those services had to be outside the state even, so it's so much better than that.
Yeah, I remember a supervisor that had to send his daughter way down to Alabama for services. That's ridiculous.
Yeah.
Like you said, Chris, this is the United States of America. What's going on? State, the country I fought for.
Do we have any other discussion or action related to COVID-19?
Oh, no.
Let's go ahead, Roy.
Good morning, Board. Roy Givens, Maintenance Superintendent. I just wanted to share with you that I've been doing a little research on a piece of equipment. It's a mister, and in fact, I believe Mike with Conservation also has one of these devices. But I was interested in it for the courthouse and possibly also over at our other facilities. So I just wanted to share with you, I'm going to be sending some information out to the board. There's a video that goes along with this. It's a portable unit, and you can literally mist everything, let it set for 10 minutes. Apparently, there's no residue. It is certified, at least what this company says it's certified, to fight against the COVID-19. So I thought that might be a nice piece of equipment to have here, particularly at the courthouse and jail.
Oh, how big of an area it can cover in 10 minutes.
I'll send the video to you. I'm sure Mike may be able to speak to it, I believe Mike does his cabins, but, I mean, for an example, this room, you could probably mist in a minute or two, at least from what I've researched that I've done.
Well, I thought you said you set it down and let it run for 10 minutes.
No, no, it's a wand. You actually, it's a portable unit that you just go along.
And who would be doing that? That would be a daily, nightly job, or have to come in early to do the whole courthouse.
Well, I guess where my mind was going is when we had the, when we had a situation here at the courthouse, this would allow us to address that situation beyond our nightly cleaning that we do. It would just be an extra protection beyond that, or if there was any other concerns. It wouldn't be something that I would have our janitorial crew, if there were some concerns, I guess what I envisioned is reaching out to maintenance and have us come up and do that service.
Probably the best idea would be to the areas that are, where we have visitors every day.
Absolutely. Main lobby.
Treasurer's office and recorder's office.
Yeah.
Just making sure there is extra, give the extra time.
But it is something that could be utilized far beyond COVID, I'm thinking just for around, like season, germ seasons, or all the different things that we have around, so, okay.
Yeah, so I was intrigued by it, I want to share it with the board, so I just thought I would mention it today. I'll send that up to you for you to look at. And one other item with regards to COVID-19, I wanted to ask the board if you would be opposed to us putting a sign at the elevator here and over at Pine Crest, limiting it to one person, just because of not being able to do that social distancing within the elevator.
Say maybe, let's say one person or family unit, maybe?
Yeah, because I'm worried about the persons who have trouble ambulating, I've seen that, where they need assistance.
Yeah, or if you have a small child, or, you know, but yeah, something along those lines, just to put some kind of limitation on it.
Because two could probably social distance in there, right?
It's pretty tough.
Okay.
Yeah, if you go, I mean, just walking through the door, you're going to technically be within that.
Oh, I think you're going...
We can get the measuring tape.
Take your corners, go to your corner.
You'd have to go to each corner really tight.
And on the same line with that, that is actually, I've been talking with the state, the court administrator, Lyndon Elges, apparently the courts have that as one of their lists of items to look at in courthouse throughout the state as well, so.
Yeah, with them on third and fourth floor and stuff, too, I suppose that's going to be, yeah.
Tell them the steps are available, too.
Yeah.
And I'm going to send you a couple links, Roy. I think Google must have told Facebook I'm a county supervisor because I keep getting all these ads for these walk-through temperature scan things, and I'm like, so it's a possibility, I'm sure that they're probably not even in stock, but something to possibly look at, and I have no idea what the cost is, but.
Okay. All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roy.
All right. Any other discussion? Any reports or information from the board?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Supposed. This meeting is adjourned.